Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, June 23rd, 2021 to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence for whatever you feel is appropriate you need to think about. Thank you. So Alderman Gripp, if you'd please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Brian, our city clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobson.
Here.
Ambrose.
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. So again, good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council. Again, like to welcome everybody in attendance and those who are viewing our meeting on any particular mobile or electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please, if you would, keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters and anybody in the region. We are happy that you're participating, your city government, and again, ask that your participation, and please reflect the common desire that we all have to make Davenport a greater place for everyone, especially for folks in here, if you have a cellphone, if you just put it on silent or turn it off simply because it gets in the way of someone talking. If you want to address the council, there's the podium, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you, and you'll have five minutes. Please be respectful of us, we'll be respectful of you, and address the council as a body. Thank you. Ms. Mallory Merritt, Assistant City Administrator, is there any city administrator update? And I missed one, so I'll go back to it if you want to tell us.
Sure. This is just a reminder for the public that next week is a free week, there will not be a City Council meeting. We wish everyone a happy and safe holiday, and we will see everybody back here in council chambers on July the 7th.
Roger, thank you. So keeping you on your toes, I'll go back. Will and Alderman, please remove approval of the City Council meeting for June 9th. Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Very good, I'll pause, I'll try and do that, sometimes I don't pause as long as I should, so I'll try. All right, and we had the city administrator updates, so next, Will and Alderman move approval of the report of the committee, the whole, for June 16th, 2021. Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Thank you. We have one proclamation this evening, and I'll read that proclamation, whereas the cities of Rock Island and Davenport have been cooperative neighbors since the founding of each community in 1835 and 1836 respectively, and whereas a long history of collaboration dates back to the 1850s, when the two communities were connected by the first railroad bridge across the Mississippi River, and whereas Red, White &amp; Boom is celebrating its 17th anniversary of cooperation between these two wonderful communities, and whereas River Vision is a cooperative plan for the redevelopment of both river fronts, and the execution of River Vision has brought continuous improvements and enhanced quality of life for Quad City residents, and whereas we honor the birth of our nation, those who gave all for our country, and those who serve today to protect our shores, and whereas we also honor those who have gone before us and have endured much hardship through the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas Arsenal Island and the military commands located there have been a significant part of the history of both of our communities, and whereas our communities commemorate the Rock Island Arsenal and its importance to our region and nation, and now therefore we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, along with the City of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim July 3rd, 2021, as Red, White &amp; Boom Military and Arsenal, excuse me, Appreciation Day, and congratulate the cities of Davenport and Rock Island for their improvements to the riverfront as well as the Rock Island Arsenal, on all of its past achievements and innovations, and look forward to celebrating future success, given this 23rd day of June, 2021. And I'll ask for a motion to move the proclamation.
So moved?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to approve the proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
I took it that? Yes? Any opposed? Very good. And who's here? Mr. Crokin, I'll meet you at the podium.
Mr. Crokin, I think you were in your last year of running the show.
Yes.
Okay, so let's get a picture.
Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Ken Crokin, I live in the 6th Ward, and it has been my extreme honor to chair the Red, White &amp; Boom Local Organizing Committee for over a decade now, and I want to say on behalf of that committee how much we appreciate your support over the years for this wonderful community event that I think we all agree would be the highlight of our riverfront summer, and your investments have done a great deal to advance this event, which is now one of the premier fireworks shows in the Midwest. So with that, I'll say thank you, but take one last opportunity to invite the public to please come and join us on the riverfront on July 3rd to enjoy this extraordinary display of fireworks. Fireworks, as all of you here know, are an inherently dangerous commodity, and when people decide to use fireworks at their homes in inappropriate settings, there is inevitably a great deal of harm and mayhem that befalls individuals and the community as a whole. Please be safe and celebrate our country's birthday by joining your neighbors on the Davenport and Rock Island riverfronts, and I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Crokin. I'll go a little out of order here. Let's see, Mr. Dorman, do you have a small comment here for this?
It's related, but I can wait.
Okay, till communications. Thank you, sir. Just checking in. All right, very good. Mr. Crokin, I wish you the best. Okay, communications for Mayor and Council, and I see a few, I'll just update a little bit. Thank our chief, and Ms. Ott, and Ms. Merritt, and Mr. Warner, went up to Des Moines yesterday, had a great conversation with our governor and the Director of Public Safety, and I'll just say that we have assets from the city that are assisting our police department, both in State Patrol and investigative assets and personnel and others that will be onsite, that State Patrol's already here, others that will be onsite very shortly to assist us in some of this violent crime and government, so the partnership between the state and us is solid and strong, and we just kind of solidified that yesterday. And then I'll be in DC and Baltimore again with some of our folks from the city to talk about, with them, some of the techniques and tools they've used to work on violent crime or juvenile crime, and see if we can learn anything and come back and take that and help with Davenport. So with that, I see multiple folks. Mr. Alderman Dorman, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. So yes, obviously, by the tie and my avid support of fireworks whenever I get the chance, 4th of July is my favorite holiday, and I do love fireworks, but I love even more watching the fireworks down on our riverfront, so I would like to echo Mr. Crokin's comments, that I would love to see everyone down there get us back to normal, back to that feeling we've all missed during COVID of being together as one in community down on our riverfront, watching what I also think is one of the best fireworks shows in the nation. That being said, though, we also do, as much as I love fireworks, I love legal use of fireworks, and remember that although you can buy them, you cannot shoot them, and you can only shoot them off on July 3rd and July 4th here in Davenport. And I felt like we were tracking nicely on that trend, but then last night, even with the rainstorm coming, I noticed quite a bit of fireworks being shot off, including some extremely loud booms that were coming from fireworks, and so I want to send another reminder that this year, the city is taking a different approach of enforcing that and having special enforcements that are happening randomly throughout this time period where you could buy them but not legally shoot them off, so you can take the risk and shoot them off tonight, but staff might be out in there on their sting, you can take the risk shooting them off this weekend, but staff might be out in there, you never know when they're coming and when they're doing their special enforcement, and so it's not worth it because that is a hefty ticket, you will have to pay when you could just wait until July 3rd and July 4th and do it legally, which both days or a weekend, which makes it even nicer that you'll have plenty of time to have a family barbecue and a good 4th of July event. So I encourage everyone again to come down to the 4th of July, the Red, White &amp; Boom that we have down the riverfront, but then also remember to only shoot off fireworks legally, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder, because we won't be back together until July 7th, and I want everybody to get on their calendar now, please. The very first party in the park will be Thursday, July 8th. It will be at Lafayette Park between 3rd and 4th Street at Gaines. There will be, we will have food, we will have music, we will have people from all the city departments there, we'll be doing, we have neighborhood groups that'll be there, German American Heritage Center, neighborhood groups talking about their history, I'm doing, you know, who built the park, and how did the park get this name, and how did the neighborhood develop, so we have a lot of things going on, you'll get to meet lots of people, because these have been great events. We started them in 2019, had to put a pin last year because of COVID, so this is the very first one. It's 5:30 to 7:30, so please put that on your calendar for Thursday, July 8th, and I certainly hope to see you there. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Ambrose.
Congratulations, Mike, for getting up and talking to the governor. You know, they've caused part of the problem with the violent crime in our community, and hopefully we can work together as a team and resolve it. I got two issues. In 1990, Iowa's former great Senator Tom Harkin worked tirelessly to pass the American with Disability Act. And I bring this up because I attended a very exciting Quad City River Bandits game along with a thousand other, thousands of other people. As I climbed the 50 stairs to attend a very exciting River Bandits game, I looked back and I saw several elderly people climbing the steps behind me. I bring this up because I believe America's greatest city, Davenport, can do much better in accommodating the elderly and those with disabilities at our great stadium. Let's take Senator Tom Harkin's lead and go beyond what the ADA compliance is and do more, so hopefully our great team, Davenport, can focus on helping the elderly and those with disabilities, make it easier to enjoy a great baseball game in our stadium. And on July 1st, Iowa has allowed constitutional carry in the state of Iowa, and what that means, all good citizens of Iowa will have the ability to carry concealed our open firearm. And, you know, if our city attorney or the police chief would like to comment on that, if they have any concerns, you know, it's right around the corner. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anyone else? Mr. Miller? Very good. Okay, we'll move on to the areas for discussion on the discussion agenda. So we have one, the first, well, we have a couple. The first one is a second consideration of an ordinance for case REZ 21-01, being the request of Dan Lorenzen on behalf of Rock Church Ministries to rezone Lot 2 of NIMs Acres from SOS Open Space District to R1 Single Family Residential District. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial, so eight votes are required for passage. Is there any public with comment?
Hello?
Sir, please come to the podium, name, ward, or address, if you're not from here, love to know where you're from.
Okay. Joshua Aguelo, 2131 West Hayes, 2nd Ward. I just wanted to announce my presence, so that if there's any questions, that I'm here to answer them, so, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in public? Question from Alderman, I see Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Reading through the staff reports, I see there was some concerns about sign easements. Can anybody address them? Anybody from staff, or maybe the petitioner?
We've had discussion with SEI, which is the neighboring property owners of where we can locate them, and we were planning on locating them at the intersection of 46th Street and the new private drive on SEI's property. We've had good conversations with Dan Narvason, the Director of Real Estate with SEI, and he's been totally open with all these, all the issues that might have been raised, so, yep, yep.
Is it something particular?
See, I want to clarify this question. Are you talking about the sign easement or the sign easement? Correct.
Yeah, you got that, sir? The easements for putting in the road and...
Yep. So the only portion that we have yet to provide is ownership, the proof of ownership, and SEI has been pretty diligent about providing that. We provided the city with their policy, their insurance policy, but we have yet to get anything that satisfies proof of ownership for the city's legal department, but we haven't been in conversation with Mr. Narvason about that, and he's expressed his desire to fulfill that, so.
Good, okay. Next, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, I think this is a great project, and the developer and the church has done a very good job in answering the questions that the City Council has, so, you know, I support it, and I hope the rest of the council does too. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our city, our regular city administrator is not here this week, but something that she had said to me at one point is zoning is for life, and that really stuck with me that, you know, this council is making this zoning decision, but whatever progresses from here is going to fall to 20 years' worth of councils likely, and so I guess, considering the picture that we are going for, I just ask that everyone keep that in mind, zoning is for life.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. Brian, were you able to find that map?
I think it's the one.
Well, it'll be closer than none, so I'll take it. This is a map that I had Brian put up when we talked about this earlier before it was tabled, and I just want to remind folks about a couple of issues associated with this zoning, and particularly with this plot of land. That's close enough. Thank you. So what Alderman Dunn was talking about is there is no access from the main road, was that 46th?
Yep.
On down, it has to go through three lots before you get to the lot that is under question. This is zoned open space, and the, I asked Public Works what the terrain slope was, and the calculations they did was at least 9%. There's floodway to the east over there, I also asked Public Works, they said a parking lot is typically max 4% to 5% slope. So this is going to involve not only a new road, it has no utilities, it's going to require a great deal of fill, which is also going to affect water flow into that floodway to the east, and possibly even backup, who knows, we don't have that information. And it will also, having a road there, it will also facilitate the development of the other three lots. If somebody, not necessarily, I mean, these are not owned forever, somebody else may buy them, and maybe the ones who own it now have no intention, but others may later. So I just wanted to express some of the concerns that I had expressed earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. Laura, I have a few questions just about open space zoning, and I was wondering if you could help. Sorry, I didn't give you any heads up about this, but could you first help us and just explain what the typical use or the thought process behind the zoning of open spaces?
Sure. So Laura Berkeley Development and Planning Administrator, the Open Space Zoning District was new to the 2019 zoning code updates, its purpose is to preserve open space and then have support uses within that, that can range anything from a community or center or a community garden to something like a small museum. So the thought process is to match closely what the future land use map and the city's comprehensive plan had for open space where possible, and this is one of those areas that has been identified for quite a long time in the future land use map as open space.
So then, could you maybe help explain the difference of, like, having a small museum building on an open space lot versus a small church on an open space lot, or why, where that difference comes in?
Sure. I mean, some of it is how, the intensity of a use is how we usually would word it, it's how many people are going to it, it would be its general scale, and just because the area uses allowed doesn't mean that it would necessarily go within that area, so it would be the feasibility of it going in that area as well.
Do we have, or, and this one you probably don't know, but do you by chance know a percentage of what is zoned in the city as open space, or...
I do not have that information, yeah.
That was the one I really meant to ask you beforehand, but I forgot, sorry. Do you by chance, do we have any sort of policy or anything like that where, you also might not know this, if we want to have X percentage to be zoned open space or anything like that, where we as a council, previous councils have said 5% of the city of Davenport should be open space, and I say that just kind of thinking of, like, Cook County, how they have their forest preserves, and you know, they say X percent of Cook County needs to still be forest preserve even though Chicago's taking up such an urban footprint, do we have anything like that?
I'm not aware of any of those kinds of documentation, really, it would be led through the future land use and comprehensive plan that was set forth and adopted by the city.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. So I'll go to the folks who haven't talked first, and then people want to talk one more time. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. So as we've discussed in prior weeks, this is a really unique case, this isn't a case that we've taken up in my time on the council, and I don't suspect it'll happen anytime soon, and I've got conflicting viewpoints on this, because I agree with our staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission that this is an incredibly difficult property to develop, to develop. I've talked to some people, and there is differing opinions on whether this can even be done or not. It's challenging, it's a challenging parcel to develop, so there's that. The other side of this is, when the petitioner purchased this property many years ago, it was zoned for, a church was an allowable use on this property, and up until we did the mass update in 2019, as long as they met the specifications on the land, he could have built this really without much council input at all. But we did the mass update in 2019, and I think, you know, the petitioner did not understand or did not hear that this was happening to their land, and so when they went to do this, they were kind of surprised that they weren't allowed to build here because in previous years they would have. Now, I don't give credence to this argument all of the time, because it's a common argument we get when we're looking at rezonings, but I do take it into account and into consideration. So I think where I've landed on this one is I respect the aspirations of the petitioner, and I, and what they want to do with the land that they have, and, you know, I'm going to vote to give them the opportunity to try to meet our legal requirements and see if they can get there, although I think it will be a huge challenge for them to meet the requirements. And then before I end, I do want to say that, so everybody understands the mechanics of this, that this is the second consideration. They need eight votes to move on, if they don't get eight votes, it dies, and then they have to wait an entire year to be able to bring this back to council if they want to pursue it further. If they do get the eight votes, it lives another week, and we have the same discussion the first cycle in July, just so everybody's clear. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Excuse me. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. While I certainly do appreciate the desire to build here, it is a, you know, it is a beautiful location for a church. You know, when I look at an overhead map of the city of Davenport, this, because of the cemetery, the cemetery's to the south, is, you know, the only large green space in that neighborhood, anywhere near that neighborhood, and if you look at a satellite map, that's what you'll see. So the logic for zoning this open space makes, you know, all the sense in the world, and I would fear for the lots toward 46th Street then being now an excuse to eat away at more open space by having those rezoned as well eventually. So I can't support this, I will vote to let this go forward, but I will not, don't, right now, I don't feel like I'll be supporting it in the final vote, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Miller.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. One thing that I, I had a great time talking to Josh and Dan last week about this particular issue and their intentions. One thing that came up that has really been going through my head a lot is what is, if someone could describe for me, perhaps Laura, if someone could describe to me what the burden is on the city when they notify a property owner of the change in zoning to open space? Like, what is required for them to be notified, and can this be notified without any kind of signature of recognition by the property owner that this has been done?
Alderman Miller, this is City Attorney Tom Warner. In this particular instance, it was a, we basically redid Title 17 and changed zoning all over the city, and there was a long public input process, there were publication requirements, but there weren't the individual notifications that you would see with a normal rezoning. So there was a lot of news, a lot of publicity about it, if people were paying attention to that, they could have seen the map, seen what was happening, but to answer your question specifically, there wasn't a specific notification like there normally would be.
I think, I think, well, that, that, I mean, it seems to me that there is a clear amount of, the issue comes in the order of operations, right? I mean, these, you know, Dan had this property many years ago with clear intent of what he wanted to do with it, in the interim between the time that he, you know, had purchased the property and the time that he wants to operationalize the property, there's been a change in zone, and it was, you know, irrespective of any kind of difficulty that he may find in how to develop the property or how to bring services to the property and so forth, the reality is that this order of operation has been breached, when he really, there was no real need for them, him to recognize any of the things that were going on around him. Dan's a man of the church, he's involved with church stuff, there's no way, there's no clear expectation that he should have to be able to understand this, like, what's going on there. And that's my issue, that's the main thing to me, you know, it's about what's doing right by the man. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman Miller. Alderman Jobson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will vote yes tonight to move this on to third consideration. On the surface, I had significant pause in thinking this project really didn't, did not make any sense whatsoever. not make any sense whatsoever with the current zoning and to rezone to allow for a church. However, I do echo the sentiments of Alderman Gribb and Alderman Miller about kind of the order of operation. You know, my biggest pause has been, and I know ignorance does not protect you from the law, but my biggest pause has been, I can't justifiably say that Mr. Lorenzen or anybody in his team really did know that this change was coming in zoning. And so I will continue to think long and hard. I will vote yes tonight to move it along. Again, doesn't make sense. They have lots of challenges, but that pause about that order of operations will allow me to continue to think over the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Anybody else first time? Okay, second folks. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, two owners of private property, and we're talking about green space. You know, the city has parks, that's just green space. We have two willing private property owners. And, you know, overtax, overregulate is heavy-handed government. Now, whoever said zoning was for life, I've been around for a while, and so has the Honorable Mayor Mattson. And if it was zoning for life, we would need a zoning department. So Davenport probably would still be south of Central Park under those circumstances. But I think it's a good project. Both property owners are involved, you know. He has requirements to meet to move this thing forward. And for the council to not allow him this opportunity, extremely unfair. So big government.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Lee.
Thank you for the chance to speak again. When we undertook the whole rezoning, which was absolutely necessary because it was so outdated, many properties across the city were changed, correct? And it is not required that every property owner that had a change in zoning had to be directly contacted about that. But there was full opportunity for many chances for public comment, involvement, hearing what the changes were, actually being able to look at many of them. So people that owned property that didn't look at it during the massive zoning, rezoning that we undertook for Part 17, it wasn't the city's responsibility to actually contact them individually, correct? We had a process that we followed that was legal and very public, correct?
The process was legal, correct. If I could add, it was a long process. It was more than a year. And I know that there were property owners through the course of that that came in and discussed it with the land use about, hey, you know, what's the change to my property? So if people were paying attention, we certainly didn't do this in secret.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Alderman, let's see, Jobson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for a second shot. Attorney Warner, something that Alderman Ambrose said spurred a question. So hypothetically, if on third consideration this passes, and then the petitioner gets to a point where, you know what, we just don't have the funds to get everything to code and do this as we need to, and they walk away from it, is there a process to then petition to rezone this land back to open space so that someone else doesn't come in and try and do something or them to take another stab? And what's that process look like?
Yes, the city can always be the petitioner on a property. So we could repetition or do a new petition to bring it back to open space. There could also be, it's a little messier, but there could also be a condition that if a certain event doesn't occur, that it reverts back to open space. But like I said, that's messier than the first option.
Thank you very much. So it's, I mean, to me, it's kind of good to know that if, give them a shot at it, and they just can't make it, they can't get to it, then there's a potential for coming back. That's good information. No, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you for letting me speak again, Your Honor. I just wanted to speak to the discussion about the feeling as, you know, were people contacted? My experience with the rezoning was started as a resident. It started before I was on council or even thinking about being on council. I attended zoning meeting at Public Works and other public meetings. My neighborhood took the initiative to check every single parcel in its neighborhood, in the neighborhood area, to see what the new zoning would be. And there were questions, and there were meetings with staff. And then about that time, I came on council. So I voted it in, but this was others in my neighborhood. There was a second meeting. They hadn't changed the way, things, the way my neighbors were, they were concerned about it. And so it was like, yeah, no, we want this. And it was changed. We also then, as then as a council person, we had certainly people coming before us with objections. And they were, this went on for a number of months. There were zoning meetings at, you know, ward meetings that would have, I had a ward meeting, and I had someone from staff come and talk about what it meant and looking at the area. There were public meetings. This was a very public event. And I understand everybody's very, very busy, but there was a lot of activity around this and a lot of effort to make it very public. And from my neighborhood's experience, it was a good one, and it was listened to. And I think almost everybody who came and said, no, I don't want to do that, the staff listened to as well. So thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to see this move forward another week. It seems to me like I'm not the only one who's having a hard time making a decision on this one. This one requires a lot of pondering. And zoning's a big umbrella, and one of the things that frustrates me is really anything that fits under the umbrella has an opportunity to get done, but, you know, it's not project-specific always. That said, it's normally most helpful to see all the compelling photos and the explanations and testimony of kind of how you envision the space being used, because I am a fan of anything done well. This is a challenging parcel, but somebody could do it well. And it's just a suggestion that although it lies in the packet, it might be good to reframe your project and help us understand what your vision is for it and how you're going to make sure that you're able to achieve the best version of that.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Anyone else? Very good. Brian, please call the roll.
Condon.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Dickman.
No.
Doran.
Yes.
Gribb.
Yes.
Jobson.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ann Miller.
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Very good. So it moves to third consideration. The next item is a motion approving the following beer and liquor license application. New license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, Ward 7 Chuck E. Cheese, 903 East Kimberly Road. Is there any public with comment? Again, name, ward or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from in five minutes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Eric Montez. I'm District Manager for Chuck E. Cheese. I'm out of Minnesota. I run the Minnesota market, the Iowa market, South Dakota, and Wisconsin. And I'm here to address concerns that have come up in recent times about our liquor license renewal. And if I could, I would like to ask permission, Mayor and Council, to read some prepared comments that may clarify the, you know, the concerns, and then I'll make myself available to any questions, if that would be okay.
So you have five minutes.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. First off, I would like to acknowledge how much Chuck E. Cheese appreciates the opportunity to do business in the wonderful community of Davenport. We feel we have a responsibility to enhance the community and guest experience everywhere. We are fortunate to have a restaurant. And it is with that thought in mind that you have our utmost assurance that we work diligently every day to ensure a safe environment for our guests and the community within which they reside. With regard to the concern brought forth about our selling alcoholic beverages, we do make them available to adult guests who would like to partake responsibly, provided they can show a valid ID that we can certify through our WeScan process in our POS systems, and that's company-wide. To ensure responsible consumption, the system is in place so that a guest cannot exceed our two-drink maximum per IDed guest per visit. We are strictly a child's place and recognize the utmost need for a responsible environment when it comes to the safety and the well-being of children and their parents. And we strive to meet or exceed local and state ordinance in any matter where that could be affected. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And if there's any questions, folks will call you up if they have something for you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, okay. Will the Alderman move the motion?
Move.
Motion in a second, okay. Any discussion from Alderman? I see a couple. Alderman Dickman.
I think this might be a question for Tom. That two-drink thing that the gentleman mentioned, is that something that we could include in the liquor license?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay. I do appreciate that, that as a policy. I do still have reservations about it not being enforceable from the city perspective. Not that I don't think that that is the current policy, just there's been some challenges at that Chuck E. Cheese and a lot of concerns about what adding alcohol to that situation, especially since there's so many young children that kind of need a lot of tending. My kids are finally getting out of that stage. But that's my personal reservation, so I appreciate you coming to seek about it.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. So, sir, if you want to sit down, they'll call you if they have a question. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, Chuck E. Cheese has been a longtime great partner with the city of Davenport. And to have concerns with a business that has been a vital part of our community, I'm a little concerned about that. Is this the first time you've sold beer and wine at the store?
Sir, if you have a response, just so we can record it on the system here. Thank you.
It is not the first time, no.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Lee.
I do have a question for you, though. Thank you. Do you have a way to enforce the two-drink policy within the Chuck E. Tree Add a Particular Establishment, a location?
As I've said, the procedure in every Chuck E. Cheese is that we have our own standard of a two-drink minimum. And we have a WeScan system in every Chuck E. Cheese that requires that an ID be scanned. And the system will not allow an ID to be scanned more than twice for purchase of an alcoholic beverage.
Okay, so that's good to know. And since you're the, you're responsible for a multi-state area, does every Chuck E. Cheese within your area, or even Nationwide if you know, allow the sale of alcoholic beverages?
I can only speak with my area, and that is, all of them do, yes.
And is that a long-term policy?
Yes, I've been with the company for 15 years, and it's been that way.
I have a question. Maybe this is a staff question. Why was this, if that's the case, why was this a new license? Or is this a new owner? Why was this under that section of the agenda?
We don't have that information right now. We would have to look.
Okay, because it sounds like, did you have a license last year?
We did. I recently took over the Iowa, we had a redistricting. So I took over the Iowa market in May, and that's my understanding. And it's the way the rest of my districts in the three different states are.
You know, a lot of us struggle with this type of thing because of the lack of local jurisdiction and authority over liquor licenses, okay? I mean, we grant one, and it gets overturned. Or we don't grant one, and it gets overturned anyway. So that puts us in a little bit of a problem. The fact that you do have an enforceable process to keep it to two makes me feel a little bit better. I mean, I'm not super happy, because, yeah, there was an incident here. But, yes, but we're kind of hamstrung anyway.
Correct. We do, you know, have alcohol. It was, you know, we don't advertise it. It's there a lot. I would tell you honestly, the main response to us, our guests realizing that we do sell liquor is surprised, or alcohol is surprised. And so, you know, we make it available when they would like.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alderman Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a quick question for our legal counsel there in attendance. My understanding from a comment made last week is that liquor licenses and at the state level, in Ankeny, I guess, are given on a shall-issue basis. Is that correct?
It's not correct technically. There's a few grounds where we could, where you all could recommend denial of this license. This is not one of those cases. And those are very far and few between, at least that's been our experience.
Okay, okay. All right, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Miller. Alderman McGinnis, Alderwoman McGinnis, sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sir, if you could, I had a question for you. I'm sorry you have to keep jumping up and down, but if you could come back, I apologize. It's just, we have to have you on the mic because it's being recorded.
I understand.
So, just for clarification, because now I'm confused as well, you don't currently have a beer and wine license. Is that correct?
Not, not a renewed. And I was, I have a general manager with me, and he brought up a great point. We recently went through a bankruptcy reorganization. It may be due to that.
Okay, so you're not serving it right now?
That may be helpful. No, not until...
Okay, so you were serving it, there was some legal business thing that had nothing to do with anything but that?
Yes.
And you believe that's when it ceased to exist?
Right.
Your license?
Well, they do need to get renewed.
Right.
And we are going through the process of that. Normally, under normal circumstances, it would be a renewal process.
I understand.
But if that helps anybody, that may have something to do with it.
Do you know how long that was, that lapse was?
I'm not aware.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
My pleasure.
So I'm going to ask Assistant City Administrator, do you have a comment that you want to clarify something?
I do, thank you. As Brian and I were just looking at, the owner has, the owner of the company has changed. So the business name changed from an incorporated to an LLC. So I think that would align with what you were just saying. So that's why this appeared on the agenda as a new owner.
Thank you for the clarification. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, Davenport has over 50 pizza parlors, and every one of them has alcohol, except for probably Harris Pizza down on the West End. You know, to do this, I think it's extremely unfair to a longtime business partner that we would be quizzing him about his liquor license.
Okay, anyone else? Very good. Brian, please call the roll.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose. Lee.
Yes.
Miller.
I have to say, can I have a say?
You can.
McGinnis.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And Dickman?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one abstention, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. This motion passes. Is there a motion for approval on the consent agenda? There's a motion and a... Okay, Brian, please call the roll for the consent agenda. As my good friend, a previous alderman Barnhill, should say, "Give me a moment."
McGinnis?
Yes.
Miller?
Epstein.
From the consent agenda?
This is the consent agenda, so all the big items that we didn't put on discussion.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Forgive me.
You're voting yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Ambrose?
Yes, except for number seven, funding the Quad City Chambers with $150,000.
So 10 yeses and Alderman Ambrose's note, no to number seven.
Okay, thank you. Consent passes. The next item we have is, is there any other items under ordinances, resolutions, and motions? There is one. So first, is there a motion for suspension of the rules to add the vote? There's a motion and a second for suspension. Brian, please call the roll for suspension of the rules.
Condon?
Yes.
Miller?
Mr. Miller, do you hear? Yes or no on suspension?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Dunn?
Yes.
Lee? Dorman?
Yes.
Ambrose? McGinnis?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
And Jobchin?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Very good. The rules are suspended, so the motion is approving the following noise variance request for an event on the list of dates and times. Southeast Little League, end-of-season picnic, Prairie Heights Park, 5600 Eastern Avenue, Friday, June 25th, 2021, approximately 8:45 PM for 10 to 15 minutes. Fireworks over 50 DVA. Is there any public with comment? Hearing and seeing none? Is there a motion and a second? There is any discussion from aldermen? There are a couple. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to recognize Thomas Mason. He's the president of Southeast Little League. He had reached out to me. Southeast Little League does an end-of-season picnic at the end of each year, and it's a great gathering, hundreds of families there. Biggest Little League in the Quad Cities, one of the biggest in Iowa. And they do a celebration for the end of season. They've been doing this for well over a decade, and when the sun goes down, they let off fireworks for around 15 minutes. And noting the mayor's cracking down on illegal fireworks, wanted to make sure that they were going about this the right way. So they reached out to me and asked how they could do this legally without getting a ticket. And I said, "We need to talk to the folks on the third floor at City Hall, and we can go through the process of making sure that you're legally setting off fireworks for 15 minutes for the enjoyment of an entire Little League." And so I hope my colleagues will support this. And Mr. Mason, thanks for everything that you do for Southeast Little League and youth baseball in the Quad Cities. We sure do appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. First of all, I've been very consistent in suspension of the rules. It needs to be urgent as it relates to a city issue and not for a moment of convenience. And I see this as a convenience and lack of forethought. And it also provides a lack of opportunity for public comment, as this item was placed on the agenda Friday evening, and it will affect many residents in this area of my ward. And nobody contacted me if this is going to be in my ward. And it is going to affect many residents in the area. The dates and times for legal discharge of fireworks were approved unanimously by City Council on November 21st, 2017, through all three readings. The most recent ordinance adopted less than 30 days ago revised the language of the fines already set in 2017, so the state court systems would treat violations as scheduled violations, and not just simple misdemeanors. This was seen as the council as so urgent to do to get firework use, illegal firework use, under control because of the difficult time that city residents, the Davenport Police Department, and city staff, that the rules were suspended on first consideration, and council voted unanimously on first consideration, suspension of the rules, and second and third considerations. The wording of City Code 940030, Section B, regarding the use of consumer fireworks, states they may be used on July 3rd and 4th from 2:00 PM until 11:00 PM. Section D of the same city code is amended on May 26th regarding the use of consumer fireworks at the Fourth of July holiday states. Any use of any consumer firework at a date or time other than those allowed pursuant to subsection B is prohibited and punishable as a scheduled violation with very hefty fines that we brought into the state. We also have, and I understand that this may not apply, but there's another section of city code that relates to fireworks, and you cannot do them in city parks without a permit from the director. I do understand, as of 4:30 this afternoon, that parks apparently approve this not under the specific sections related to fireworks, but under a special events thing. Special events requires a 90-day application for full review by city staff. And I understand that this special events application was submitted Friday, five days ago, including a weekend. Every resident of Davenport received this postcard stating the prohibitions, both in terms of the dates and in terms of park. Now, I understand it's going to be shot off right next to the park in my ward from a church, which is private property. I do understand that. But how are we going to control whether the pieces parts go onto the park? And I suspect that they will. On Monday, Chief Sikorsky and CSO Ott, and we talked about the process they have used this year to discourage illegal use of fireworks other than those dates, the citations that the Davenport Police Department has issued to date, and the apparent success of that strategy. It's certainly been quieter this year than it has in past years. Despite the clear violation of one section of city code amended by council to strengthen it as recently as 30 days ago, we are asked to vote on the use of fireworks on June 25th, which is outside of July 3rd and 4th, and is going to be in the 8th Ward. And again, I was not contacted about this at all. And it's under the guise of a noise variance under apparently special events policy. That application was not included in the background information that we were provided on this, and had no realistic opportunity for public comment. I suppose a letter went out that said, "If you have any questions, contact Brian." And it was over the Southeast Little League letterhead. What is Brian actually supposed to say when neighborhoods call and say, "I got this postcard saying we can't do it, and here we are changing the rule already on the 25th? It's okay for me, but it's not okay for you. You could still get fined." This is not even compliant with the city's special event policy because it was not submitted 90 days. It was submitted Friday for consideration. I like Little League, and I'm doing some work with Little League up in Ridgeview area, a north Little League. And under appropriate timing use, I like fireworks. I just don't have a tie like yours, because I would look funny. However, we've talked a good talk and taken strong action about controlling and restricting the use of fireworks throughout the city. And finally, we as a city team, all of us, are apparently being successful. I was not even notified so that I could be involved and consulted. We cannot now, as a council, arbitrarily and capriciously pick and choose our city code that was advertised to every address in the city as a clear violation of code and approve the use of fireworks in violation of this code, for which we have notified everybody. We certainly cannot still expect city staff and Davenport Police Department to continue to enforce this city code on everyone else while we approve for this particular situation to occur that's happening under another section of code that is not directly related to the use of fireworks. I will not stand for such abuse of city staff and especially our Davenport Police Department, who have to go out there and enforce this when somebody says, "Well, you're letting Little League do it. Why can't you let me? It's a birthday party." And I put something in three days before, especially within my authority as an elected official in the 8th Ward, where this party is apparently approved to occur near and near the Ward Public Park. And I would say if anyone has a problem with my being against this in favor of our following the process and the code that we are successfully implementing this year and that is working, give me a call. Don't contact Brian. I'm extremely disappointed that no one on council or on city staff reached out to me about this. I request the respect that a ward alderman deserves for actions occurring in my ward that has such ramifications on my constituents over a large area. I have consistently shown the same respect to all of you when it's something that has ramifications. I have asked you how you feel about certain things in your ward. Everyone has been silent on this, and I didn't even see it till Friday night. I ask my colleagues to vote no on this item itself if the suspension passes, which it did, as it is a violation of city code specifically related to the use of fireworks and advertised throughout the city and undermines everything that we as a team of council, city staff, and the Davenport Police Department have accomplished so far with restricting and controlling the use of fireworks that adversely affects those with PTSD, terrifies animals, and disturbs the peace of our city. The letter that went out only said, "If you have questions." It didn't say, "If you have objections." It just said, "Questions." So if I'd gotten a letter like that, I would assume done deal. So again, I'm asking for your respect as a ward alderman for that particular ward that this is going to occur in, and I'm asking you to vote no so that we can support the city code for fireworks at 9.40.30, Section B and D. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. There's a lot. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do certainly understand the alderman's concerns about not being notified of something that happens in the ward she was elected to serve. I avoid saying my ward when I can because I'm elected to serve the people of 3rd Ward. It's not my ward, in any case. But setting that aside, it feels like to me that a group that has been doing this for a long time is, in this effort to get this approved, is trying to come into compliance. And I appreciate that, and I want to tell you that. I appreciate the Southeast Little League recognizing that there is a difference. We routinely grant use of fireworks to groups, yes, with longer notice, but we don't just have fireworks on July 4th. We have fireworks, Palmer does them, the ballpark does them, so we grant use of fireworks, you know, across the city for special events. So while I understand and also like to have the typical league time, I do appreciate your trying to do the right thing, and I hope the kids in Little League understand that, you know, we're all in the city together, and, you know, this is a way to try to do things correctly. So I thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I want to thank Mr. Mason for the many, many, many hours he's worked with the young people in our community. And as far as the fireworks goes, I think it's a great opportunity for the coaches, the kids in the family to have a fun end of the season. You know, it's unfortunate Alderwoman Lee wasn't contacted, and maybe the next time she won't be left out of the discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Dunn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I too am sorry that Alderwoman Lee wasn't notified, and maybe we should figure out a way to shore that up a little bit. I do want some assurances that the mess will be cleaned up, and I'd like to know this is the same process, that they go through the same process that St. Ambrose, Palmer, and Modern Woodman go through to get this license, to get this permit.
So there is a difference there. There's not an actual permit that's issued by the fire department for this, because this is not commercial-grade fireworks, where those would be professionally shot, and those are commercial-grade. So that's the difference between those and this event.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderman Dorman?
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. As a proud Davenport East Little League alumnus, I am jealous of Davenport Little League, Southeast Little League, and the nice fields and great opportunities that you guys have turned your program into. And I would like to point out, though, that Davenport East is the last Davenport Little League that did go to the College World Series, or the Little League World Series, so just pointing that out. But if there's, for whatever reason, that this does not pass tonight and you guys need to move fireworks to a different ward, Davenport East and Garfield Park would love to have you and have the fireworks later, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Alderwoman Condon?
There's a town just north of here, east of here, that has a new traffic camera, and I hear people are getting tickets for going one mile and over. The thing has no grace. It has no give. So while speeding is illegal, I think grace has got to be one of the most effective things we can use as a city. And Little League's doing a lot of good. The folks have a tradition to keep. I think we need to get out of our own way on this one. You know, the ordinance is effective to stop people who are abusing the new state law allowing fireworks. It's not to put a wet blanket on something that should be a celebration.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Jobchin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had the opportunity for my son to play through Southeast Little League for, I think, six years or so, and so I've attended many of their end-of-season events, and the fireworks show that they put on is usually good, well-run, cleaned up well. Afterwards, they do take care of those facilities over there. So, you know, I always commend Mr. Mason for his leadership over at Southeast Little League. I want to commend Alderwoman Lee for being steadfast and speaking up, and it is a bummer that a normal process was not followed with this. And so I've told her before in private, and I've done a poor job in public of commending her for being diligent and kind of picking at the details that I know myself I often miss. So thank you, Judith, for speaking out tonight. Overall, I'm supportive of this. I probably swing to the other end of the pendulum from Alderwoman Lee and more of the intent versus letter of the law type of thing. So, you know, I will be voting for this this evening. Sorry, Alderwoman Lee, but, you know, as I guess my ask would be for Mr. Mason, knowing that you've done this before, you've had fireworks shot off at your end-of-season get-togethers, it's playing better next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I did want to provide some context of one of the reasons why this didn't go through the process earlier, which was, you know, things have changed with fireworks. The previous mayor didn't take such a hard position against fireworks this mayor has. And I'm speaking, thank you. Prior to that, also, at one point fireworks were not legal, and they've become legal, and they now have something in place. But last year, Southeast Little League did not hold their end-of-year picnic due to COVID. And I've talked with Mr. Mason, he brought it up to me, and I said, "Well, this is the process you have to go through now, otherwise you, very likely, the police will show up and very likely you will be fined." And so now the Southeast Board understands the process if they want to do that. And I will remind you, that is why we have noise variances. They are a variance from the law. Yes, we have a law on the book, but from time to time, we approve variances for certain things, and in this case, that is what we're doing. So I, and then the last thing I would like to say is I will take the blame for not alerting you, Alderwoman Lee, and I offer... you, Alderwoman Lee, and I offer you my apology. I did reach out to city staff and have them start working on this, and I should have reached out to you at the same time, and that is my mistake, and sincere apologies. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman Lee?
Apologies accepted. Thank you. Since this is, it sounds to me like this is something that you do every year, except for COVID. So you didn't do it last year. The original one went in, the original code went in in 2017, so this is nothing new. Even if it was done, which it was, using the special events, which is not tied to city code, instead of what we told everybody in the city of Davenport was prohibited, you would have known that you needed 90 days to do, and you should have been told by city staff that you needed 90 days to follow the city policy. So this isn't anything new. Again, I like Little League. I like fireworks when it's done right. But we have a process in place. We notified every address in this city that they are prohibited, except on those two days. So who do we say yes, and who do we say no? Who do we pick? Winners and losers? You get to do it. Somebody else gets a $225 fine for doing it because they didn't put something in on Friday that then comes before us five days later. So that's my concern. We as a city, after voting 30 days ago to make this a tougher ordinance, to make it more enforceable and more of a deterrent, are we going to undermine everything we have done and spoken and acted on, and acted on unanimously, to then say, oh, but somebody's birthday party, or, oh, somebody wanted to do this? And yes, we have to make clear that display fireworks are different from consumer fireworks, completely different set of procedures and standards for that. These are consumer fireworks, and that's what this card says. If somebody calls me and says, why are they doing fireworks? I say, well, city council, in violation of this card, said it was okay for them, but it's not okay for you. I'm really looking for consistency, and so that this system that was put in place by us, by city staff, and by the department, you know, the police department, we follow it consistently. On the first year, we're actually doing it right and getting results, and then suddenly, we're not doing it. It's not against Little League. Little League, I am sure that you work more hours than I can possibly understand to get this Little League working. I mean, I greatly appreciate it. This has nothing to do with that. If it was somebody else in my ward wanting to do the same thing, I'd be saying the same thing. So I just can't see making an exception when we advertise this to every address in the city that says it is prohibited and punishable. And then suddenly, we're saying, but it's okay for you. How do we say no to somebody else that comes in on a Friday to put it before city council with a suspension of the rules five days later, including a weekend? That's my point. It's nothing against Little League. We've got to be consistent.
All right, Alderman Alderwoman Lee. Right, okay. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe government should be flexible, and I call the question.
And seeing no one else, and there's no second on the question, we will go to the rule. Please call the rule, Brian.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Condon?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Doorman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Eight yeses and two noes, Your Honor?
Very good. The motion passes. Is there any other public with business? Mr. Handel, you know our rules.
You, Bill Handel, 4th ward, also Nashville, Tennessee. I had the pleasure yesterday of speaking for the Riverfront Pyramid Commission, and I was telling them about the good things that I saw about the Quinlan Court that just opened. I had the pleasure of attending its opening a couple weeks ago. And I had the very fine things on it, and I told them about, perhaps it could be the first stage of a relocation of our farmer's market, so that a strip going from Union Station all the way to, I guess, Pershing, I guess, would be a perfect place to relocate the farmer's market in something very similar to what we've got at Quinlan Court, because right now, our farmer's market does nothing to enhance our downtown area, except, you know, the periphery over here. We can add, well, but anyway, let's forget about that at this point. I don't want to go into the farmer's market. That's a different subject. But I wanted to talk about this thing that I saw online from Quad Cities Times about the expenditure of the money from the feds to compensate for the loss of monies from COVID. And there was indication about spending $4 million for a playground on the Main Street Landing Site, a child's playground. There was also monies that were proposed to be expended on more child's playgrounds in other parts of the city, different current playgrounds. I, well, I mean, we talked, the mayor talked about the proclamation about toward Rock Island and the execution of River Vision. This, I'm thinking about the semantics of accept the plan earlier this year. Well, I think execution might be perhaps the right word for River Vision, because we do not, as I've said in the past, we're not currently under River Vision. We have abandoned River Vision. River Vision had no child's playground on this side of the tracks, not a single one. That was introduced four years ago by our in-house landscape architect, Josh Peterson, a good guy, but very, I think, he's not of the level of design of Hargraves and even RDG. So anyway, I think if we were to continue that, a playground, as I said in the past, a child's playground in front of the, in front of Main Street Landing isn't, I think, entirely the wrong location. It has its place. We've got a child's playground in Centennial Park, but it isn't a very good one. We also have across the street a water feature that Mr. Peterson designed that isn't also a very good one, because on that water feature from the street, you can't see where the spraying is occurring. There's nothing, it's attractive? Does it attract you, or does it repulse you? It repulses you. It's repulsive. When you're up on that water feature, you don't have, if you've been to Rock Island, that's a good one, because they actually created a gash into the soil. They lined it with walls of limestone. There's water sprinkling up. Kids enjoy it. The one we had, it looks like the water falls on your head. It's like the kind of thing you do to, before you jump in the pool, you know, to clean yourself off. It's repulsive and very expensive because of all the landforms that were created for it. Well, anyway, go back to Quinlan Court. The problem with Quinlan Court, it has a lot of good things, but the problem with it has three problems, two of which I guess were unavoidable. It's adjoining River Drive, as I've said before, lots of traffic. That's not the kind of place you want to have, you know, a party. We don't have that on Party on the Plaza at the end of the Skybridge, Second Street, 3rd Street, date. River Drive's got cement trucks that are barreling by at 50 miles an hour. Not only noise, but the threat to your well-being. We also have, to one side, train tracks, lots of noise, and the train tracks block the view of our beautiful river, because apparently, the design was not altered. Perhaps there was no chance, but it wasn't altered between when it first came up in 2017 and what is executed now. In the meantime, the railroad raised their tracks. So what would have been a good view of the river is entirely blocked. I'm a tall guy. When I'm sitting down on those benches, I don't see the river. We should see the river.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Handel. Anyone else? Mr. Dale, you know our rules?
I like to hide behind this. Good evening. My name is Dale Gilmore, and I live in the 6th ward. What I'm about to read was read by me at the council meeting of May 20th, 2015. So to a few of you, it will be a rerun. To the rest of you, just please listen. It's spring, and the flowers are growing. So are the number of illegal signs growing in the public right of way. You know, the ones that offer to clean your gutters, mow your lawn, repair your drywall, give you swimming lessons, power wash and stain your deck, landscape your property, buy your house, clean your house, or remove unwanted trees. And those are just the ones I saw on my way down here tonight. These signs in the public right of way are illegal and should be removed. I think they make the city look trashy, especially those handwritten ones. We buy diabetic, anyway. Store names or individual phone numbers are on all these signs, so contacting the violators should not be a problem. Just call the store or number listed, tell them they're in violation of ordinance number, whatever it is, and that they have 24 hours to remove their illegal signs. If the signs are not removed within 24 hours, the city will remove them, hold them as evidence, and charge the violators a fine of up to $100 per sign. I don't think it would take too long, or I'm sorry, I don't think it would take too many examples to put a stop to this. Let's clean up Davenport one illegal sign at a time. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to rant. I feel a lot better.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? And a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Very good. We're adjourned. Have a safe, long weekend break.